Thank you. Okay. Good evening. We will now open the floor for input from the public on the 2025-2026 budget. Please be advised that the board has scheduled 30 minutes for tonight's input session. Once we reach the allotted time, the regular board meeting will be called to order at 5:30 p.m. Please be reminded, you will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red and you will hear a tone indicating your time to speak has expired. At 5:30 -- okay, I'll stop right there. Good evening. I call the June 24, 2025 regular board meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve --
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Yes. Okay. Ms. Washington would take a hand vote. And she's voting in the affirmative? The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We would now move to item 4.1, Executive Session. May I please have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I move to convene an Executive Session for the purpose of discussing receipt of legal advice regarding a litigation update, contractual matter regarding the purchase of property, parent appeal request, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Dennis to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, board members, please vote. And Ms. Washington would do a hand vote as well, in the affirmative. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. The board would now enter into Executive Session. May I have a motion to end the Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I move that we adjourn to Executive Session at 7:04 and resume public session.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter to end Executive Session at 7:04 PM and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Did everyone get a pop-up? Because I'm still waiting for one. Oh, but I was able to do it before. Okay, thank you. The motion is sec- seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. I will be presenting the inspirational moment. Good evening, everyone. As I bring my term as Chair of the Richland II Board of Trustees to a close, I want to begin with two words that carry the weight of every decision, every meeting, and every school event. Thank you. Serving in this role has been one of the greatest honors of my life. It's been a journey of listening, learning, and leading alongside a team of individuals who have truly committed to the success of every child, every educator, and every member of our school community. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Kim Moore, Dr. Marshall Lynn Franklin, and the entire leadership team, whose unwavering leadership and collaborative spirit have helped move this district forward in meaningful, measurable ways. Under your guidance, Richland II has not only stayed the course, but set the pace. As my term comes to a close, I find myself reflecting on some of the highlights of the last year under my leadership we've been able to see and accomplish with the help of my colleagues. Reduce excessive legal fees by managing board attorney expenses more re- reasonably. Increase visibility of district leadership at school-level events, reinforcing a culture of support and presence. Promoted effective communication and a shared vision to address critical issues like teacher shortage, school safety, and career development. Help make confident decisions around school closing and delays, prioritizing student and staff safety without confusion or controversy. And perhaps most telling of the strength of our district's climate, we've seen a drastic decrease in media contacts at school board-based incidents. That's not luck. That's leadership. That's teamwork, and that's trust. I also want to uplift the professional development we've invested in as a board and school district. As a matter of fact, the last one is tomorrow, and that's the Board Chair Transitional Workshop. These workshops went beyond policies. They focused on people. They taught us strategies to build character, reinforce transparency, and create an atmosphere of mutual respect and responsibility. These moments help shape how we govern and how we engage. To my fellow board members, Ms. Angela Nash, thank you for always bringing compassion to our conversations. You've shown consistency in standing up for what's right for students and families. Mr. Gary Dennis, your calm, thoughtful leadership and commitment to academic excellence have brought insight and balance to our team. Ms. Shelley Williams, your dedication to parent voice and community involvement has ensured that families remain at the heart of our conversations. Ms. Nikki Porter, your advocacy for equity and student-centered policy has elevated the importance of inclusive, transparent decision-making. Ms. Tamika Washington, your experience as an educator and passion for student achievement have helped ground our work in real classroom realities. And finally, Mr. Joe Trapp, your practical perspective and willingness to connect with the community have been vital. You've reminded us of the real-world impact of every vote. Together, despite our differences, we've made progress. We've built bridges, and I believe we have made a difference. As a proud board member and the 2024 NAPSI National Association of Black School Educators School Board Member of the Year, and the first from South Carolina to receive this honor, I carry that recognition not as a personal win, but as a reflection of the incredible work happening in Richland School District II. That award belongs to every student I've cheered on, every parent I've listened to, every staff member, teacher, and school administrator I've stood beside, answered your calls even in the midnight hour, and every staff member I've thanked along the way. In the words of Tyler Perry, "The first weapon I've ever held was my mama's hand. And just like her hand guided me through life," I hope my service has helped guide the district, leaving not just fingerprints, but footprints for others to follow. To our students, you are the reason I and we do this work. To our families, thank you for trusting us and for trusting me and believing in me. To our faculty and staff, thank you for believing in every child. And to Richland II, thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing me the privilege of serving as your School Board Chair, Richland School District II. This may be the close of my term as Chair, but my heart and my hands remain ready to continue to serve. Let's continue to walk forward together. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. If you would, please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. We would now move to item 6.1, Consent Agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the June 24, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We do not have anyone who have signed up for public participation, so we will move on to 8.0, Voting on Executive Items. 8.1, Contractual Matter Regarding the Purchase of Property. May I please have a motion on a contractual ma- matter regarding the prop- the purp- the purchase of property?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
I move to allow the superintendent to enter into an option agreement to purchase property as discussed in Executive Session and to allow due diligence and contract negotiations.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? Seeing none, please. Well, check the motion for me first, Mrs. Washington. Is it correct? Okay. Please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 8.3, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Oh.
Madam.
I skipped eight point. I do apologize. Let me go back to item 8.2, and I will recuse myself and pass it over to Mrs. Porter.
May I please have a motion regarding the parent appeal request?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
I move to hear the parent. I move to have the parent present their appeal in person to the board with board legal counsel present.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Mr. Dennis, can you repeat the motion?
I move to have the parent present their appeal in person to the board with board legal counsel present.
Once you see the motion on the screen, will you just verify if it's correct, Mr. Dennis? Is that correct, Mr. Dennis, on the board?
That is correct.
Board members, please vote.
No, I abstain from the vote.
The vote is six yes, one abstention, and the motion passes.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. We will now move to item 8.3, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Trapp, Mr. Trapp, I do apologize, and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 9.0, Unfinished Business. 9.1, General Fund Budget for 2025-2026. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. As our Senior Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Williams, makes her way to the podium. Today is the third reading of our general budget for the 2025-2026 school year. In accordance with the state statute, we have complied with all of the requirements to include giving the 15-day notice. We held our second budget session today as far as a public session at 5:00 PM, and Ms. Williams is going to present where we're at with our budget. As the board is aware, and the public may not be aware, County Council has approved for us to receive a six-mill increase to the budget. Originally, they gave us 1.5. I want to make sure that people understand that that millage increase does not impact anyone that is living in the house that they own. It does not impact owner-occupied facility or homes, only for people who are renting out a home or businesses. We are very grateful to County Council for the six mil, and we are eager to present where we stand with the budget based upon those numbers and for the board to approve it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Moore. I stand before you seeking approval of the fiscal year 2026 general fund budget in the amount of $415,350,55 which includes both recurring and non-recurring funds. As Dr. Moore has stated already, this budget includes a six-mill increase as approved by Richland County Council on last Tuesday evening, and it also includes amount of $415,350,550, which includes both recurring and non-recurring funds. As Dr. Moore has stated already, this budget includes a six mil increase as approved by Richland County Council on last Tuesday evening, and it also includes the final number revenue amounts that we received from the state. So as it relates to the new recurring funding of $13,250,60, we're able to fund down through priority number nine, which is a teacher salary increase. And as you may recall from first reading, the cost to fund a $1,000 increase as we initially planned is $3.6 million. We have about $2.7 million in recurring funds left after we fund items one through eight, and that remaining funds, funding would allow us to provide a $750 increase to each cell on the teacher salary schedule. Okay? And also below the recurring funds, as you approved on April 22nd, we also are utilizing fund balance to fund items 10 through 23. And with that, I'm available if there are any questions.
Board members, are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, item nine, the teacher salary increase by 750. I know in the other document that we read, there the 750 was for first-year teachers. Is this 750 across the board for all teachers?
That's 750 across for all teachers.
All teachers?
Yes, yes, sir.
Board members, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
That's a vote in, aren't you? Says no ash- okay. Board members, we will need to vote on this. This is action requested.
Madam Chair.
Yes. May I please have a, go ahead for discussion?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to let the public know, you know, a lot of people have asked about it, but items one, two, three, and four are mandated by the state. So I wanted to make sure the public understands that the step increase for teachers, the estimated health insurance, the 5.9% from last year's mandate, the 4.6 health insurance for retirees, and the bus driver salary increase of 2% is mandated by the state. So that is something we are obligated by state law that we're got to fund. And then everything else is fair game.
May I have a motion regarding the approval of the 2025-2026 general fund budget?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move to approve the general fund budget for the 2025-2026 school year with the inclusion of the six mil increase as presented by the superintendent.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Ms. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Nash?
Yes. I am going to be, you know, I know that there are things that we need, but I, I, I'm hesitant to say this, but I am going to say it, is that six mil increase, although it does not go on first homeowners, the majority of people in this district in this area rent homes. So there is a possibility that rent is going up for those people, which is why I wasn't supportive of the mil before, and I'm still not in supportive of it now.
Board members, any discussion? Seeing none, please check the motion. We're waiting for the motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Two. The motion is five yes, I'm, yeah, five yes, two no. The motion passes. Oppose one more time, Mr. Dennis. Okay, we will now move to item 10.1. No action requested. Policy revision proposal, policy IKE, promotion and retention of students. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a adjustment to policy IKE, and as you can see, our senior chief of academics, Ms. Jen Morrison, is at the podium to discuss this policy.
Thank you, Dr. Scott, members of the board, and Dr. Moore. Today, we're presenting some updates to policy IKE, which has to do with promotion and retention of students in Richland, too. You've had the revisions in your board packet, and, and I just want to note that changes to the policy have to do with really clarity and wording, alignment, especially at the high school level, the retention and promotion requirements, to state accountability requirements under the report card indicator related to high school student success, and, and then also changes to Read to Succeed guidance from the state level due to changes in state legislation related to Read to Succeed. Particularly with Read to Succeed, the two changes that are significant is that the cut score for having to attend summer reading camp increased, and then, and then students are no, like portfolios are no longer allowed as an exemption. So those are the major changes and the reasons why you see what you see here. Can I answer any questions?
Board members, are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
So on this policy, it was on the second page, the third bullet down, there was a note talking about the 23, 24 school year. If we're making a revision to the policy, is there any way to take that note out and make it a better worded part of the policy?
Can do. I'll make a note of that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dennis.
Board members, any other question? Wait, wait one second, Dr. Franklin.
So because that group of students is still in high school, we actually, we need to wait until they go all the way through before we change that.
Okay.
For, for example, the current or the rising high school seniors, this doesn't apply to them. So we take the date out, it could be perceived that it applies to them. So once that group of student goes out, then we can come back and revise that and remove the date. It would then apply to all students who were in high school at that time.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Any other questions or comments, board members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
Unfortunately, I got a phone call, and it came in my hearing aid, so does, it, it rings, it rings in my hearing aid, so I can't stop that. But you said that applies to all those students that were in high school during that period?
Okay, so the personal finance class is required for the, beginning with the students who were in ninth grade and 23, 24. So it applies to that group of students and any group of students that come after them. So because we have, I think, two groups of students who are still in high school that this doesn't apply to, we would need to keep the date in there until they graduate, and then it will apply to everybody who's in high school at that time.
Copy, so two years. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Franklin.
Okay, board members, any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I have a question about, let's see, in IKE, am I on the right one? The promotion and retention of students, right, IKE?
Yes.
Okay, so this is one, two, three. On the fourth page, there's, it was scratched out, the with limited English proficiency and less than two years of instruction in English as a second language program, and it switched to who, who are classified as English learners or have less than two years of instruction in an English program. So I know that we have English learners who, at some point, get a score that shows that the fact that they're an English learner has nothing to do, like, they get a, a high enough score to where there may be other concerns if, if there's struggles, right? But this kind of takes that away where they're automatically exempt if, if they're classified as, is there no graduation out of that program?
I'm going to actually ask Mr. Newton to share, because I know he, I suspect that this is language that the state is using at this point, but I just want to double-check with him. But I'm going to note the question in the meantime.
Ms. Porter, could you please restate that question?
So my concern is that there's an automatic, so what I've, I understand is that there's an automatic exemption for English learners for retention. Well, no, it says, and have less than two years of instruction in an English program. Okay, so I'm trying to, I'm thinking about how that qualifying score, I believe it's like six or up, that would make it so that you could, you could infer that there, them being an English learner is not an issue with what they've, with their, their progress, right? But there may be something else there that we would want to focus on to help them progress and not just continue to move the child on.
Right.
So that's my, my concern here. But then again, maybe the less than two years instruction may cover that, but you can speak.
Yeah, it does, and we get additional guidance as well with students who are, who are English learners. There's a whole checklist that we have to consider for them as well, and that's kind of new this year. It's in additional guidance, but not necessarily in what you see there. Yeah, so you're, you're correct. There are many other factors that we have to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions? If not, thank you so much. We will now move over to item 10.2, policy revision, GCC slash GDC, employee leaves and absences. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Dr. Franklin, our senior chief for HR, to present this policy.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. Tonight, as, and we would like to bring forth to you proposed revisions to our employee leaves and absence policy. If you recall, we updated this policy last year to move away from our current allocation being classified as personal leave and sick leave to paid time off. And one of the things that was in the policy last year that we did not ask for to be changed was the accrual of paid time off. If you recall, our current employees' practice has been, since I've been here, has been that we advanced the leave, and this year, we were going to fully implement the board policy where we were going to be accruing leave on a monthly basis. And so our request tonight is, instead of us moving forward with the plan of implementing the policy as is where we are accruing leave, we're asking that we change the policy so that employees will be, that they will earn their leave at the beginning of the year, and it will be advanced to them at their time of the beginning of their school year. So example, a July, person who starts on July 1st would be fronted or advanced all of their leave at the front, their 15 days at the beginning of that school year, versus having to earn 1.25 of that leave every month. So our request is, is that we are allowed to move forward with an accrual-based system, from accrual-based system to an advanced PTO model, which will allow us to front-load all of our paid time off for our employees at their start of their physical year. And remember, that paid time off will be for that year, and then at the end of the year, it will move to sick leave, and then at the beginning of the next year, they will receive the allocation for their paid time off. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them regarding the proposed change to our employee leaves and absences policy.
Board members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, Dr. Franklin.
Thank you so much.
Foster, not Franklin. Exactly. We will, we will now move to item 10.3, proposal 8% bond resolution. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will ask that Ms. Williams, our senior chief financial officer, and Mr. Will Anderson, our chief operations officer, come forward to present tonight, and they will introduce our special guest that we have here with us.
Okay, good evening again. We have with us tonight, Mr. Mike Gallagher from Compass Municipal Advisors, who is ready to answer any questions that, well, to present and answer any questions that you may have as regards to our 8% bond resolution. And then Mr. Anderson is also available to answer any specific questions you may have related to projects.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Moore, it's a pleasure to be here with y'all tonight. This is similar to what we did last year. This is a resolution to authorize up to $30 million of general obligation bonds. This is for information only tonight and would be on your consideration at your next board meeting. Couple key things I would say is, this would be used to fund capital projects. So it's nothing to fund operations or the general business of the school district. This is only to fund capital projects and the capital fund budget, which Mr. Anderson can speak to. We would propose having the bond sale on the 20th of August, and we, that would put us in a position to be able to close by the 10th of September, which would allow us to have this done before the tax rolls are open for the next fiscal year, and it would be done with no millage increase. So it would be the same levy that we have for debt service, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, are there any questions? I think some of us had an opportunity to come to the mini workshop, so I think that was addressed there. So just for the public, if you don't see any questions, we had an opportunity to have a workshop, so.
Two sessions last week.
Yes, two, absolutely. So a lot of our questions were actually addressed there, so that's why you don't see many questions today. So with that being said, thank you so much. Do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will now move to item 11.0, new business action requested, funding flexibility approval. May I please have a motion regarding the funding flexibility?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the funding flexibility report for the 25-26 school year as presented.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, board members, please vote. The motion passes. We will now move over to 11.2, election of board officers for the 2025-2026 school year, and I will now turn this over to Dr. Moore.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with policy BD, organization In accordance with policy BD, organization of the board, the officers of the Board of Trustees are chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. The officers are elected and sworn in annually at the last meeting of the board in June, at which the last order of business will be the election of officers. The election will be conducted by the superintendent, who will preside and act as temporary chairman at the meeting until a chairman is elected. The superintendent will take nominations for each office, beginning with chairman. Officers will be elected by majority vote of the board using paper ballots unless there is a single nominee, in which case a show of hands will be used. Elected officers will take their positions immediately upon completion of the election. Each officer will serve one-year term, a one-year term. No officer may succeed him or herself in the same position more than once. Therefore, each officer will be eligible for only two successive terms in the same office, but may again be elected to the same office after a break in service. Vacancies in the above-mentioned office will be filled as outlined in law. Ms. Tanidra Washington, our Executive Assistant to the Board, will serve as the teller for the nominations tonight. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the Board Chairman for the 2025-2026 school year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Trap?
I move to nominate Angela Nash for the position of Chairman of the Richland School District 2 Board of Trustees for the 2025-2026 school year.
The nominator gives the name of Ms. Angela Nash. Ms. Nash, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Trustee Angela Nash has been nominated for the Office of Board Chairman for the 2025-2026 school year. Are there any additional nominees for the position of Board Chairman?
Yes, I would like to move to nominate Ms. Porter for the position of Chairman for the Richland School District 2 of Trustees for the 2025-2026 school year.
The nominator has given the name of Ms. Porter as Board Chairman for the 2025-2026 school year. Ms. Porter, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any additional nominees for the position of Board Chairman? Hearing none, we will close the nominations for Board Chairman. Trustees Angela Nash and trustee Nikki Porter have been nominated to fill the position of Board Chair. Because we have multiple nominees, we will have to do a vote, a ballot vote. Ms. Washington, do you have all votes? The vote is four votes for trustee Nash and three votes for trustee Porter. Therefore, trustee Nash is duly elected as the Chairman of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees So I open the floor for nominations for the Board Vice Chairman for the 2025-2026 school year.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, Dr. Scott?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Washington for the Vice Chair of the 2025-2026 school year.
Trustee Washington has been nominated, do you accept? Are there any additional, board members, are there any more nominations for the position of Board Vice Chair? Hearing none, nominations are now closed for the Office of Board Vice Chairman for the 2025-2026. Trustee Washington has been nominated to fill the position of Board Vice Chairman. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven yes and zero no. By vote of seven, trustee Washington is elected as the Board Vice Chairman for the 2025-2026 school year. Congratulations, trustee Washington. We will now move to the election of Board Secretary for 2025-2026 school year. I open the floor for nominations for the Board Secretary for 2025-2026 school year.
Madam Superintendent?
Mr. Dennis?
Yes, I nominate Dr. Scott for super, or for Board Secretary.
Dr. Scott, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Board members, are there any more nominations for the position of Board Secretary?
Madam Superintendent?
Ms. Porter?
Yes, I nominate Mr. Gary Dennis for Secretary.
Mr. Dennis, do you accept the nomination?
Madam Chair, it is a great honor to be nominated for that, but since I actually nominated somebody, I am going to bow out. So I do not accept.
Board members, are there any more nominations for the position of Board Secretary? Hearing none, the nominations are now closed for Board Secretary for 2025-2026 school year. Because there is only one nominee, trustee Elkin Scott, has been nominated to fill this position of Board Secretary. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed, use a like sign. I think so. So it looks like six, six one. Trustee Elkin Scott is the newly-elected Board Secretary with a vote of six yes and one no. Therefore, you are duly elected as Secretary of the Richland School District, Richland 2 Board of Trustees for 2025-2026 school year. Congratulations, trustee Scott, Elkin Scott. At this point, I will close the election and turn it over to our new Board Chair.
I don't have the script, so I'm just going to say, I'm going to turn it back over to you to go over the next draft agenda.
Oh, Lee, thank you so much. We would now go to item 12.1, draft agenda items for the July 8th, 2025 regular board meeting.
Thank you. Madam Chair, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is July 8th, 2025. The call to order will be at 4:30 PM for the July 8th, 2025 meeting. We will then move to approval of the agenda, followed by release to the executive, for executive session. During the executive session, we will discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, personnel matter regarding the executive assistant to the board's annual evaluation, personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation progress report, and conclude with public session at 6:30 PM. We will then have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the consent agenda, which will include approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from the previous meeting, classified employment releases and in-district transfers, excuse me, and continuous improvement plan update, followed by public participation. We'll then move to voting on executive session items, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. Next, we will have unfinished business action requested. We will review for second reading, policy revision approval for policy IKE, promotion and retention of students, the second reading for the policy revision and approval for policy GCC slash GDC, employee leaves and absences, and approval of the 8% bond resolution. We'll then move to new business, no action requested. The board will have a discussion on administrative rule CCA, parentheses, R, organizational chart, followed by agenda items for the next meeting. We'll review the draft agenda for July 22nd, 2025 regularly called board meeting, and then move to our if-needed items as necessary, public participation, executive session, voting on executive session items, and conclude with board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next meeting agenda or to the future agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Trap?
I would like to raise a concern. The meeting has been changed from 5:30 to 4:30, and there was no board vote to do that. Board policy clearly says the board may change time and place of the regular board meeting upon a majority vote of the board. I have an email dated June 12th that says literally, I have recommended changing the start time from 5:30 to 4:30. So I guess I don't understand why it's listed on the, on the agenda here tonight, it's starting at 4:30.
Dr. Scott?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would turn that over to Dr. Franklin or Dr. Moore, I do apologize for that, that time change.
The time change was, was requested during a board agenda meeting, Dr. Scott. I believe it was requested to provide sufficient time for the board to, excuse me, to receive my update on my progress on the goals.
Thank you for that regulation, because I was trying to figure out what was going on, but I think that was the meeting that Mrs. Washington, Ms. Porter, and myself, we were at the agenda meeting and realized that we have to have more time because we have to discuss Dr. Moore's evaluation. So because of that, the leadership team requested that the meeting be moved one hour earlier. And let me just say this, you know, the devil is a liar. One thing that I'm not going to do is allow people to accuse me of doing things that I don't, because one thing that you will learn about me is I'm very transparent, and I, under my entire one-year leadership, have never made a decision without my colleagues. So with that, I think Mrs. Washington shared with us that we needed that time because we have to go over Dr. Moore's evaluation, so we made an executive decision to do that. But I did not make any decisions, and it's a decision that had to be made because we want to be in appliance, compliance with what we need to do for Dr. Moore's evaluation. So don't be fooled by what people say, watch their actions, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Hold on one second, Mr. Trap, I just want to clarify something. Ms. Franklin, can you, Franklin, can you just let us know if it is okay, if we are able to have the board meeting at 4:30 without a board vote? If you can just confirm for us.
Yes, ma'am. So when the board approves its calendar, its meeting calendar for the year, it's posted on the district's website, is what the board voted on, it shows the dates for its regular meetings, and then it shows the dates and times for its workshops. And so once that calendar is approved, the dates are set for the regular meetings, both the dates and times are set for the workshops. And so to change the date or a time for the workshop, it would require a board vote, because you've already voted on the specific dates and the times. However, for a regularly scheduled meeting, you've only chosen the dates, you have not chosen a time. And so it's our practice, however, that the time is chosen during the agenda review meeting, so that the board officers and superintendent can make, can choose a time that will allow for, allow sufficient time for the content of the meeting, as some meetings do require more time than others. So for example, if it's a meeting like the July 8th meeting where the board has a number of things in executive session, during the agenda review meeting, the board officers can recommend a, an earlier time in order to have enough time for the board to complete all of the business that's on the agenda for that night. When the draft agenda is presented in this meeting, that is an opportunity for the board to either vote to approve that time or not.
Thank you. Mr. Trap?
I would like to say a few things, and I realize that I'm basically in the minority here with this, but I'm looking at my Tuesday, November 25th board meeting invitation on my calendar for 5:30. Several people have already agreed to come at that time. We don't vote on the agenda tonight. The policy is quite clear, if we want to change the time of a meeting, it doesn't, you know, it said clearly that the board may change the time and place of the regular board meeting upon a majority vote of the board. The board meeting was planned for 5:30, it was changed, the email clearly says we changed it. It would have really been simple, if it was that important to follow policy tonight, we would have had, we would have voted on it tonight, it would have been on the agenda and voted on tonight. There are those of us that work for a living, and we have, we have this on our calendar, the public assumes it'll be at 5:30, because that's when we have our meetings under normal circumstances. I just really think it's sad that, that we, that three people made the decision to change it, and absolutely has no problem saying that they made the decision instead of the majority of the board. And I really would like for the board to get back to doing the board's job and voting on things that we have been authorized to vote on. Thank you.
Okay, thank, Ms. Washington?
I just want to, are we still on the, I mean, the time, or can I make a motion to vote on something for the next meeting?
You said to vote on for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, yes, let's add it on there.
So can we add to the next meeting agenda, the board legislative contact? I think that's something that we vote on every year.
Yes.
And so I didn't see it on our agenda for tonight, and so.
I think there's probably one other thing too, because we have to do safety and security as well. And there was a project that started with Dr. Helen, and so we will. And there is a project that started with Dr. Helen, and so we will be able to have somebody that will finish that out as well. So thank you for that reminder as well. Was there any, I'm sorry?
So we're adding a safety, we're doing a board legislative contact and safety and security.
Yeah, we do need to add those those votes and take care of those things at that time. Anyone else have anything else? Okay, we'll move on to item, oh, we're at board and superintendent comments, everyone's favorite part. All right, so that's gonna be item sixteen point zero, or sorry, item sixteen, fourteen point one. And so first up, Ms. Porter. Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, let's do that. Tamika, will you do, Ms. Washington, will you do a motion for that? Will you add safety and security in it? Go ahead, Ms. Washington.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the July eighth agenda, a safety and security update. Is it an update? Oh, okay, safety and.
Sorry, new representative.
Okay, safety and security, to take action on the safety and security committee, and also to add the board legislative contact. Appointment.
Chair. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dennis?
A second.
All those in favor, oh, is there any discussion? The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis to add the appointment of the board legislative contact and safety and security committee chair to the July eighth agenda. Or is there any discussion? We will now take a vote. Should we do a hand vote just in case? Okay. I still don't have mine, but I've wrote voting the affirmative. The motion is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Next up, we will have item fourteen point one, board and superintendent comments. We're gonna start with Ms. Porter.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep it short. Congratulations to our officers this evening, our newly elected officers, and have a great summer and see you on July eighth.
Okay, next up, Mr. Trap.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have a whole lot to say tonight. I just want to say one thing. I think it's really sad that we have policies, and there are members of this board that just don't choose to follow those policies, and I also find it very discouraging that while I was speaking a moment ago, I could actually hear the laughter coming from another board member to my left. There are times that being on this board is really quite disheartening, and this is one of those evenings. Thank you.
Ms. Washington?
Okay, y'all, I'm sorry if I have a lot to say, but tonight, we voted on a budget, and we are seven months away, about seven months away from the legislative session, which starts in January. That may seem like it's far off, but it's not. It'll be here before we know it. One of the things that I really am going to advocate for during this twenty-five, twenty-six school year to put on our legislators' radar is providing money to increase for our classified staff. This year, that was included in our milledage increase, no mandates from our legislators. Across the state of South Carolina, agency after agency receives increases in their pay. Bus drivers receive increases, teachers receive increases, but our classified staff, that money is always left to come out of the taxpayers' budgets or taxpayers by increasing taxes, and it's not something that is always funded or districts are able to fund. I absolutely adore and love our teachers because I'm a teacher. I appreciate all of the hard work of our bus drivers because they are frontline, and they are caring for our students. But our classified staff, they are also just as important as any other person in the building. And so that is definitely something that I am going to advocate for in this upcoming session. I want to say congratulations to Ridgeview Boys and Girls Track and Field. There were some students who qualified to attend the Nike Outdoors National Nationals in Eugene, Oregon. The girls won All-American in the, I don't know what this is, four by four hundred, but congratulations, girls. I also want to say congratulations to the Richland Two recipients of the South Carolina Caucus of Black School Board Member Scholarship. They gave, we gave out ten scholarships this year, and this year, four of those scholarships came from Richland Two students, three at Westwood and one from a student from Ridgeview. Scholarship information will be forthcoming this winter, so school counselors be on the lookout. To everyone, continue to enjoy your summer, and if you're a parent of a young girl, little girl, the high schools have some really fun cheer camps. Check them out. They will keep your little girls busy from nine thirty to twelve thirty, Monday through Thursday, with a nice little showcase on that Thursday. Have a great evening, Richland Two, and be blessed.
Next up, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say congratulations tonight to all officers. You know, we just finished budget season. However, for me, budget season is a year-round thing. There's a lot of things that didn't get put in this budget that I was not a fan of, but we did what we had to do because of the money we had. But hopefully, we can work with these legislators to get us more money because it's there in the state. We just need to work to get it here so that we're not putting it, the burden on our taxpayers because our classified staff needs a pay raise. The fact that we can only give a seven hundred and fifty dollar pay raise to our teachers, that it didn't sit well with me. Knowing that we need SROs, knowing that we needed, we still haven't paid back that five million that we paid in the fund that was taken out of the fund balance last year. You know, we got elementary certified behavior interventionist, things like that. There's just a lot, and I just feel strongly that we can get the money out of the state versus putting it on our taxpayers. But I also wanted to say thank you to everybody today that come up and presented to us. And I did get a chance to go to the annual registration drive event at Dent Middle School. Let me tell you, it was a great event. There was a lot of people that needed a lot of help. I witnessed parents and guardians really thankful for it. So thank you for everybody that put that event on. I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and then I want to remember all those serving in our nation and all the R. Two families that have loved ones that are deployed during this time of uncertainty. So that's all I have.
Ms. Williams?
Okay, I want to say congratulations to all our newly elected officers. It is my wish you all continue to uphold the standard of the district and keep what is in the best interest of children and public education to the forefront. Just remember, in every decision we make, let us ask what is best for the children because when we put children first, we build a better future for all. Also, I would like to congratulate all the newly retired people as of July first. Enjoy your retirement. Feel free to come back at any time, if possible, but to volunteer and everything else, but just enjoy your retirement and get some time to relax. And everyone else, have a great evening and enjoy.
Dr. Elkin Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to say thank you to my colleagues for supporting me to become the secretary. I do appreciate that. And thank you to all the constituents, parents, students, everyone a part of Richland School District Two. It has been a marvelous year to serve as chair, and I really enjoyed the workshops that we had the opportunity to take part in, and I see that we really could use a few more. With that, I'm going to share two quotes. One, I'm going to read, and over you then share a quote. Jealousy is a powerful and often destructive emotion. It can be fueled by fear, insecurity, and comparison, and it can wreak havoc on relationships and personal well-being. And then I will share this. When they go low, we go high. That's from a chair Obama, if you know who she is, the first lady of President Barack Obama. And then I will end with this quote. Our envy always lasts longer than the happiness of those we envy. God bless you. Have a wonderful week.
Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take a moment to share a few reflections from the recent South Carolina Association School Administrators Conference that we all just attended. This is an annual gathering of more than several thousand professionals at the event, and it's not just a professional event. It's an opportunity for us to engage with fellow educators and thought leaders from across the state who are all united by a shared commitment to student success. This year's conference was rich with insight, innovation, and inspiration. The sessions and keynote speakers challenged us to think boldly, lead with purpose, and continue evolving to meet the needs of our students, families, and communities. It was a powerful reminder that learning doesn't stop for leaders and that the best leadership begins with a willingness to learn, reflect, and grow. I was very proud to see Richland Two represented in so many meaningful ways at the conference, from presenting best practices to participating in panels that showcased our district's forward-thinking approach. It reaffirmed our dedication to continuous improvement, leading with integrity and holding fast to the values that make our district strong. The conference also underscored the importance of belonging. While each district faces unique challenges, we are all a part of a larger educational ecosystem. Collaborating with our peers reminded me of the incredible power of connection and how sharing strategies and solutions can elevate the work we do here in Richland Two. And finally, there was joy, the joy of celebrating accomplishments, of seeing familiar faces, of being reminded that the work we do, while complex, is deeply rewarding and impactful. That sense of purpose and pride was present in every conversation, and I returned home feeling renewed and energized for the year ahead. I also got to see Grant Hill, which was one of the highlights of my time at the conference. For those of you that may not know, he was a phenomenal basketball player, but he also put together the dream team that, the new dream team, not the original, the new one that just won gold at the Olympics. So in Richland Two, we are committed to being a school district where every student, and I prefer each student, is supported, every voice is valued, and every leader is equipped to make a difference. The SCASA Conference helped us sharpen that focus and deepen that resolve. That resolve is also evident in the good work happening during Richland Two's third-grade summer reading camp at Bridge Creek Elementary School. One hundred and seventy students are participating this year in activities designed to improve their fundamental reading skills and enjoyment of reading. Senior staff witnessed our own Arthur Newton, Executive Director of Elementary Instruction, reading a Little Red Riding Hood story to kids told from the wolf's perspective. Yeah, we might have to have Arthur read to us for an inspirational moment. We had eleven teachers, twelve interventionists, and eleven teaching assistants, all committed to helping our students in summer reading this year. Thank you for all the good work you are doing for students and families this summer. Summer reading camp students will finish on Thursday, June twenty-six, and we have high hopes that they all will excel. I also want to thank our teachers that have been here every day, every week, doing work over the summer. We've had our math group here last week, this year, this week, the science teachers were here, working on ways that they can improve their teaching in the classroom. I want to extend my congratulations to our new officers. I look forward to working with each of you, and as we prepare to celebrate Fourth of July, the birth of our nation, I would just remind everyone to remember, freedom is not free. Thank you.
Okay, so one, I just want to say thank you to everyone as always watching online and to all my colleagues, and I'm excited to be chair and work with everyone on the board. And I wanted to give a little shout out. I had an opportunity to go to the White House and to go to Capitol Hill, and I want to give a shout out to Kinsley Ringus, who is the twenty twenty-five District Two Congressional Art Competition winner winner right here. And I was walking through Capitol Hill, and I looked over, and I saw this art piece, and I was like, wait a minute, that's from Columbia, and she's right here in our district. So I want to say shout out, it was really cool to be able to see, you know, Richland Two from right here to Capitol Hill, and so congratulations, Kinsley. It looked beautiful. It was showcased beautifully there. Also, I just want to say, one of the things I think is really important is that we look at things of the past as just being part of the past as lessons, and then what we look to as the future as being something positive and going forward and leaving everything in the past that is negative. And so I hope that we're able to do that as a board and work together and just completely take all the lessons we learned because, quite frankly, we did get a good amount done. We've got a lot of amount done with the people that are here and the people that are on the board now. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for your hard work. I'm very much looking forward to the future and saying goodbye to yesterday and all the great things that are in our future. Now, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to adjourn the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been, the motion's been made by Ms. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. All those in favor, if we can get a hand vote, we have, is, okay, sluggish hands. Okay, seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Have a great night, everyone.